Okay, this meeting is called to order at 6:34 PM. Please rise and let the clerk lead us with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the January 23rd, 2024 Agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Okay, we are on to special reports.
Wonderful. We do have two special reports this evening. To start, we have a textbook presentation, as the board knows, and for the community, anytime that we purchase textbooks or books, it'll be used for instruction for a whole class. Per policy, they are presented to the school board. And then they go on review at the district office and the public library here in Penfield until the following board meeting, and the board then votes and would review feedback if there was any. And then followed is our State of the District presentation. This is a longer presentation, but very excited. This team has put a lot of work into it, and it does remind me of what I like to refer to as pre-COVID days, when we used to do an annual update on all things Penfield, academics, and whole student focus. And so it's nice to get back into that now that we're starting to have data post-COVID. And I will start off with inviting our teachers up who are here to do our textbook presentation. You're here for it, but that's wonderful. Yeah, that's great. There is a clicker there that should work on this computer, and it'll, your slides are all in there, and we can't wait to hear more about it.
Cool. So my name is Caitlin Baronowski, and I'm a 7th grade ELA teacher at Bay Trail. My team and I would love the opportunity to teach the novel Before the Ever After by Jaclyn Woodson during our poetry unit. Before the Ever After is a novel written in verse, which means the pages don't look like your traditional prose book. The short vignettes work together to tell a cohesive story, giving our students the opportunity to see how elements of figurative language can work together to tell a story. Before the Ever After tells the story of ZJ, a young boy whose father was a star NFL player, until he starts exhibiting symptoms like confusion, memory loss, and personality changes. ZJ's mom helps him understand that his dad is suffering from a brain disease due to injuries during his career. The story is highly engaging from the start and illustrates themes of family, loss, love, and the importance of support from those around you. As a team, we are committed to finding books that will help our students develop a love of reading. We hope to be able to add this to our curriculum soon. Thanks.
Do you have any questions?
Board members' questions, comment?
A comment. I am so, so thrilled to see this book, and you have a hard yes from me. So, I read this book, and it is absolutely marvelous. As one who does not, I'm not drawn to poetry immediately, and prose, it's very intimidating for my brain. But I've also read, this book reminds me of one, I pulled it up here, it's called Clap When You Land.
Yeah, I read that one.
Okay, that one is just brilliant, and I didn't think I would like it. However, getting the full story, the emotions, the description, the language, it is amazing. And this book, oh my goodness, I can see so many of our students really enjoying it because it's sports-related, okay, let's face it. The support, that tight family unit, and how it is being pulled at the seams, and where they receive the support, and it is just a beautiful, beautiful story, and it is well told. So good choice, folks.
Thank you. I think a lot of our kids agree with that. You know, they get overwhelmed by poetry sometimes, and so we're really excited to have the opportunity possibly to show them kind of how it can shrink together to tell a full story.
So the inside's just like little vignettes, poems. You know, at first, they'll probably be like, "Ah, poetry," but once they start getting into the story, though, I think they'll really enjoy it.
That's great. Anyone else? And the books are...
At District Office and the public library in Penfield, right up the path, and they'll remain there. There's a comment card you can fill out if you'd like to come and take a look at it. You can also, because we present and it's live-streamed, you know, you can just look the book up as well and see it at any library, and just email comments to, I would say, Dr. Maloney, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
And maybe I missed it, but can you explain how that integrates into the curriculum?
Yeah, for sure. So, we talk about teaching poetry a lot of the times. We talk about teaching like vocabulary words, you know, like what is personification, what is a metaphor, that kind of stuff. And we're still going to do that with our students. It is a review, they've been doing it for many years by the time they get to us in 7th grade. So a lot of times, it's not as engaging, right? We're going over kind of standalone poems, kind of how to dissect meaning from it. And so after we go over kind of those basic like rote vocabulary words, we want to be able to read with them, read this with them as a whole-class novel, to show them like, "Oh, look, here's an example of a metaphor and how it can help kind of move a plot along," and kind of engage them in more than a, you know, kind of single paragraph poem sometimes can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
I share all the time. You're more than welcome to stay for the entire board meeting, but teachers are busy, and we understand if you have other pressing...
I have other plans.
No problem. Thank you very much. And that shifts us to our next special report, which is the Penfield Central School District's State of the District. And I'll have a few people come up, as well as the presentation will be done by our directors, Devna McLeary, or McGee, and both Dr. Potter and Dr. Maloney, as they're preparing. And just so you know, the clicker there works, and I believe Dr. Potter and Dr. Maloney have a clicker as well. But I'll just share with the board and the community, you know, one of the, there's a lot to be proud of in Penfield. You know, public education has been through a lot, and really, I keep looking at this district. This is an area in this presentation in the fact that this board, even prior to most of us who are here, has always focused on this concept of developing the whole student. And so, you know, we've always talked about that, and over the last few years have really been looking at making that very specific, concrete, our SEL block at K-5, the work we're doing across the district. And I share that because we're going to talk a little bit about the school report card and New York State report card, and where we fall with our data now that we're out of the COVID pandemic and sort of the optional Regents exams and no Regents exams. And so we're starting to get back in track, not just us, but all districts. But what I liked about the presentation is it's not just data, but it's also all the other work we do around focusing on the whole student, making sure that we have a safe environment for students, both academically and emotionally. And so I'm just really proud of all the work. Obviously, it would take a much longer presentation to dig into all the details, but it's a nice overview approach. I did get to see a preview of the whole thing this morning, so I appreciate their time. And I'll turn it over to the team for the presentation.
Thank you. So we have a really long presentation for you this evening, so get ready for it because we do have lots to share, and as Dr. Putnam shared, that we kind of did a little rehearsal today, and that was different. But we have finally landed on an iteration that we feel is going to be great for you to hear, as well as the rest of our community. So, good evening. I am really excited to start us off, because over the past, I feel like it's been almost three years now, that our district has really been busy unpacking, understanding, and working towards fully implementing the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. We know the importance of being thoughtful in our approach and for our work to not feel siloed, but rather, we wanted our work over these past three years to feel comprehensive and cohesive, so that it's sustainable for our students over time. So as a district, we have developed an infrastructure that really helps to ensure educational equity and helps us with the implementation of the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. Our Penfield Central School District's State of the District this evening is an example of our public commitment to the four principles of the CRS. Our Board of Education and the Superintendent have provided us with a clear vision for our district. And so the offices collectively, all of our offices, the Office of Equity and Access, Curriculum and Instruction, Human Resources, and Business and Finance, we work collaboratively to analyze our policies, our programs, and our practices for every facet of our system. And the work that we do is to help set the right conditions for our students to thrive socially, emotionally, behaviorally, and academically. In summary, we apply an equity lens to all things. So this presentation will emphasize the work that our district has done and will continue to do as aligned with the four principles of the CRS. So this evening, you will hear the first principle, welcoming and affirming, you'll hear things about our SEL work. You'll also find materials that represent and affirm our students' identities. With high expectations and rigorous instruction, you're going to hear information around how we are preparing environments that our students led and engage them civically. You'll hear examples of lessons that have been developed using Learning for Justice, social justice standards. You'll hear information around our inclusive curriculum and assessment. We're going to talk to you about resources written and developed by racially, culturally, and linguistically diverse perspectives. We're also going to provide instructional strategies that adapt to diverse learning styles. And our last principle, ongoing professional learning and support, we're going to talk to you about the job embedded professional learning, because we realize that this professional learning that we're engaging our faculty in and our leaders in should not be done in isolation. We're providing the tools for our leaders to access equity and implement equity, both professionally and personally. We also are looking for opportunities to provide our educators with support in aligning the curriculum and the instruction to the histories, languages, and experiences of our traditionally marginalized voices. So now, we're going to talk a little bit about our Equity Long Range Plan. At the start of this 23-24 school year, we launched the District Equity Long Range Plan. And in developing our District Equity Long Range Plan, we considered and incorporated the policy and guidance documents from the New York State Education Department. Those documents include the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Policy Statement that was released spring of 2021, the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Draft Framework and Call to Action that was also released spring 2021, and the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Overview Document, also released spring 2021. Our district's Equity Long Range Plan offers impact strategies towards our educational equity improvements for the next five years. These impact strategies are organized under five collective commitments, which facilitates our support for all of our students and for our faculty. If you're interested in reviewing the complete Equity Long Range Plan, please visit our district website under Departments, which can be found under Equity and Access Office. So our first commitment, our first collective commitment is create culturally sustaining environments that ensure all stakeholders feel safe, known, connected, and experience a sense of belonging. Collective commitment two, establish high expectations for achievement and personal growth for each member of the district community. Collective commitment three, use culturally sustaining, researched-based practices for designing and delivering best practices. Collective commitment four, develop authentic and inclusive partnerships with our diverse students, families, faculty, and community partners. And collective commitment five is where we seek, organize, and allocate resources towards achieving these commitments. And so as we transition throughout our presentation, you'll notice that we've tagged each of the areas with the collective commitments of our Equity Long Range Plan. And so as I start us off with social-emotional learning, I'll share with you that we're going to provide an overview of how we approach, as Dr. Putnam shared, taking care of the whole student. So socially, emotionally, behaviorally, and academically. When it comes to social-emotional learning, research shows us that achievement is improved and increases pro-social behaviors such as kindness, sharing, and empathy. It improves student attitudes towards school and reduces depression and stress amongst our students. Research also tells us that students will have a much harder time learning if they are unable to manage their emotions. Developing emotional regulation is as important as developing academic skills. In fact, students who can regulate their emotions are more likely to do well in school and get along with their peers. Greater social and emotional competence can increase the likelihood of high school graduation, readiness for post-secondary education, career success, positive family and work relationships, better mental health, reduced criminal behavior, and engaged citizenship. For these reasons, our district has and will continue to prioritize social-emotional learning. And so when we're thinking about the introduction of our Equity Long Range Plan at the start of this school year, we also introduced our Code of Conduct. And so the Code of Conduct and Support sets forth expectations for behavior, promotes bias-free environments, promotes fair, appropriate, and equitable student discipline practices, and complies with all applicable laws and regulations. The Penfield Code of Conduct and Support is designed to promote equity and access, strongly support our principles of being trauma-sensitive, culturally responsive, and restorative. And so I want you to know that the next sections are really going to dig in to the SEL and the DASSA, but before I talk a little bit more about the SEL, before we talk a little bit more about the SEL, I want to just highlight the work of Mrs. Devna McGee. She is going to support the next part of our presentation. As one of our district K-12 social workers for Equity and Access, her primary role is focusing on, or one of her many roles, actually, she wears a lot of hats for us, but really digging into the district's social-emotional learning efforts. She's done a phenomenal job with collaboratively planning with me and other district stakeholders and in executing the SEL student self-assessment. Devna also works in partnerships with principals, teachers, and members of our mental health team, and looks at the data deeply to figure out ways to support our students. Though not a district administrator, her leadership, professionalism, and work ethic positively impacts our district. So I just had to say all of that because it's all true, and I appreciate your support with the Office of Equity and Access. So now I'm going to turn it over to you to take a look at our SEL benchmarks.
Perfect. So, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but our work this year is anchored in the New York Social Emotional Learning Benchmarks, Equity Revisions, and they're aligned with the culturally responsive sustaining education framework, as well as the Learning for Justice Social Justice Standards. So by anchoring into these benchmarks, as Dr. Potter just shared, that we'd like to see positive outcomes as far as our students being more engaged, our students feeling more fully and authentically engaged in their own social-emotional well-being and becoming empowered learners. With these goals in mind, we held our second administration of the SEL student self-assessment this past fall. This year, the community was provided the opportunity to opt their students out of the self-assessment if they didn't want their student to participate. So as you can see, we had about 7% of our students opted out, 93% of our students were able to participate in the screener, and we had a total of 83.5% of our student body participate in this fall administration of the screener. It's important to note that our student self-assessment was given to students in grades 3 through 12, but for students in kindergarten, first, and second grade, their teachers completed the teacher perception of students' SEL skills assessment. So in other words, the results that you'll see for students in kindergarten through second grade are reflective of their teacher's perception of their skill attainment, while for results for students in grades 3 through 12 reflect their own perceptions of their own skill attainment. We assessed four topic areas for this administration, emotion regulation, self-management, social perspective-taking, and supportive relationships. And so our kindergarten through second grade students' greatest strengths are in the areas of emotion regulation and social perspective-taking. And our students through, in grades 3 through 12, their area of greatest strength was in supportive relationships. This administration also helped us recognize that our students need some ongoing skill development in the areas of managing and regulating their emotions, and so focusing on these two areas is going to yield us the greatest amount of growth for our students, So at the close of the fall assessment window, I met with building administrators and mental health team members at each of our schools to review our student SEL data. We identified ways that we're already meeting SEL skill development needs for some of our students, and also opportunities to support additional students. With the help of our SEL integration specialists, Angelique Moise and Laura Fitch, our K-12 building faculty and staff were also provided the opportunity to review interventions that target specific skill development in SEL areas for our students, and that support is also offered continuously throughout the year. The introduction of the daily SEL block in our elementary schools last year was a significant step towards intentionally building our students' SEL skills. Additionally, at the high school level, there are monthly community-building days that provide opportunities for students to continue to build supportive relationships with each other and with adults, which we know is essential to positive development for our students. It's my hope that we can identify an effective approach to SEL skill development for the benefit of our Bay Trail students and our community. And we're working to build capacity with our adults at Bay Trail to meet this goal. In addition, some of our next steps are going to include collaborating with multidisciplinary teams to support lessons and events that specifically address some of the areas of opportunity that we identified from our screener, and also providing continued professional learning opportunities that are SEL-related for our K-12 faculty and staff. A man in the saw.
Yes. Hand away. So next, we're going to talk about DASSA, Dignity for All Students Act. The New York State's Dignity for All Students Act seeks to provide our elementary and secondary school students with a safe and supportive environment, free from discrimination, intimidation, taunting, harassment, and bullying, whether it's on school property, a school bus, or at a school function. And so DEI guidance released by the New York State Education Department on August 9th urged school districts to ensure effective policies and procedures to prevent and address bullying and harassment in our schools. Our goal as a district is to create spaces where all of our students experience safe and supportive environments, to progress again developmentally, academically, socially, and emotionally. In partnership with administrators, faculty, staff, students, and families, we all play an important role in creating and sustaining a healthy and respectful environment. Since the 2021 school year, we've worked as a district to strengthen our communities by practicing for reporting our DASSA, and this, in our practices, this really has been a work in progress. The 21-22 school year, it was our first time really digging into how we were reporting DASSA. Since then, we've developed systems and structures for reporting with accuracy and to hold ourselves accountable. And there's also been tons of training for our administrators so that they can have a process that they can understand, but more importantly, implement clearly and consistently. Next slide. And so here is just some information around what we mean when we talk about bias-related areas, that we know that these protected groups unfortunately experience. So as referenced earlier, the goal of DASSA is to provide a space where students are not subjected to bullying, harassment, discrimination, or cyberbullying, whether that's by one of their student peers or by district faculty. And so it's important to note these bias-related areas, because as we're transitioning through the next several slides, you'll note them as they're aligned with the information that's connected to each of our schools. On the next slide, what we have to do is, every district across the state, as well as BOCs, is responsible for reporting and sharing the information relative to material incidents for discrimination, harassment, and bullying. And that's called our School Safety and Educational Climate Reporting System. And so the data that's collected for DASSA includes the information such as the number of incidents, who the offenders are, who is the target or the victim by type of incident, and bias. So those biases were listed on the previous slide. So each incident reported on a district or school should have been investigated to determine and verify the facts and to identify the appropriate category for the reporting incident. So the investigation, if it's determined that it's material, it must stay on district records, and we must retain that information until the youngest person involved in the DASSA incident reaches the age of 27. And so what do we mean by a material incident? So this slide shows from the state a flow of what is meant by a material incident. After investigating an incident, the Dignity Act Coordinator, or the school Dignity Act Coordinator, so there's the district DAC, which is me, and then our building principals are the building DAX. We must make a determination as to whether the incident is material, and if the incident is material under DASSA, it should be an act or series of acts by a student and/or employee on school property. It must create a hostile environment by conduct, with or without physical contact, and/or verbal threat, intimidation, or abuse. Must have conduct such a severe or pervasive nature, such a severe or pervasive nature that it has the following effect: unreasonably and substantially interferes with a student's educational performance, opportunities, or benefit, or mental, emotional, and/or physical well-being, or reasonably causes or would reasonably be expected to cause a student to fear for his/her/their physical safety. This slide represents how we report a material incident. So there are 10 categories that we can report, of which two are directly connected to DASSA. And so for it to be a material incident, as just referenced on the previous slide, 5A, when we report, is specific to discrimination, harassment, and bullying, which excludes cyberbullying, and 5B is specific to cyberbullying, which is all things that are connected to electronic communications, but not limited to cell phones, computers, and tablets and other communication tools, including social media sites, text messages, chat rooms, and And so now we're going to dig into our schools specifically. So for the next following slides, you're going to notice the specific related biases for the material incidents by school. And again, they would represent 5A and 5B. And so over the past two years, you'll see the information here for COBLS. It represents both the incidents and the related biases. Next slide. Harris Hill. Indian Landing. So what you'll notice here with Indian Landing, the total biases for the 22-23 school year are greater than the total number of incidents. That's because there could be more than one bias that's connected to the incident, so there may be an intersection. So for example, you could have gender and sexual orientation, both play a role in that material incident. Those would be the related biases, and you'll notice that also at the secondary level. We'll now transition to Scribner. Bay Trail. You'll notice for Bay Trail, the biases exceeded the number of incidents, and both the 22-23 school year, the number of incidents, and both the 22-23 school year, the number You'll notice for Bay Trail, the biases exceeded the number of incidents in both the 22-23 school year and since the start of September to this month, January 2024. And then finally, we have here the report of incidents and related biases for Penfield High School. So it's at this time that I turn over the presentation to Dr. Maloney and the Office of Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Potter. The Office of Curriculum Instruction, myself and our curriculum directors, Sheena Conway and Kim Guppert, we will be presenting tonight on our culturally responsive curriculum as well as our achievement. So as we shift into culturally responsive curriculum, I will provide an overview of the curriculum review cycle that we have developed, and Sheena will outline specifics relative to our culturally responsive curriculum. And you will see that the alignment and correlation to both collective commitment 1 from the Equity Long Range Plan, as well as strategy 1.2 within the Equity Long Range Plan, which is provide curricular experiences for students that are representative of all cultural histories. So we are very proud of this visual, as it represents two years of hard work developing a curriculum review cycle. And not since prior to the Common Core standards has the district had a formal curriculum review process. So as I mentioned, over the past two years, the Office of Curriculum Instruction has collaborated with a team of teachers and administrators to develop a new curriculum review cycle. And in fact, we just wrapped up vetting this curriculum review process to teacher leaders within the district. So the curriculum review cycle ensures all district curriculum is reviewed on a regular basis using a culturally responsive lens. This visual represents the process. So as you can see, each content area will engage in a six-year review cycle. And each year of the cycle has a purpose and a specific roadmap, which the curriculum directors will use as they lead departments through the curriculum review cycle. Let me talk a little bit more around the specifics related to the curriculum review cycle. So there were a number of purposes aligned to the curriculum review cycle. Assure consistent scheduled examination of all curricular areas, K-12, through a five-year cycle. Year zero makes it a six-year cycle. Year zero, you'll see, is really where you begin, the directors will begin to pull the team together and get things mapped out. The second purpose, allow for controlled budgeting, limiting large textbook adoptions to different years. Provide consistent input to the Board of Education regarding curriculum renewal. Ensure professional learning aligns with the implementation of new curriculum resources. Align to content standards, specifically the New York State Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, the New York State SEL benchmarks with equity revisions, and the Learning for Justice/Social Justice standards. And then this last bullet was very important to all of us who are involved in the process. Incorporating student and caregiver voice into the curriculum review process. Because when you stop and think about curriculum, the consumer of our curriculum is our students. And so, as I mentioned, there is a six-year process. And year zero focuses on establishing and prepping the curriculum review team, making the team aware of each of the steps in the process, and then working with the team to create a timeline for year one, secure a consultant specific to the content area if needed. Then we shift into year one, the awareness year, which focuses on the research of best practices, the review of existing curriculum and resources, in addition to alignment of standards. So to review curriculum for cultural relevancy, alignment to standards, and representation of all stages of understanding by design, which is our curricular model, we created a tool for the teams to use. And the development of this tool involved pulling components and curating from documents such as the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, Dr. Jean Aguilar Valdez's rubric for culturally responsive lessons and assignments, as well as the culturally responsive curriculum scorecards for both ELA and STEAM from the Education Justice Research and Organizing Collaborative at NYU. We wanted a tool which provided a rubric for teams to gauge how culturally responsive their curriculum is, as well as include specific look-fours and desired results to help guide teams with next steps, should they need to make improvements from a culturally responsive perspective. We found each of the documents I previously referenced to be extremely helpful in creating this tool, and we're excited to begin to implement. Year one also involves cross-referencing the existing curriculum and resources with current best practices, identifying essential standards, investigating how other districts are meeting the needs of students. Is there something we are missing? We pride ourselves in Penfield partnerships is a board goal, and we pride ourselves in collaborating with other districts. Year one also involves analyzing data for gaps in student achievement across multiple subgroups within the current curriculum, gathering feedback from stakeholders, faculty, students, and caregivers. As I mentioned, it was important to us that students and families' voices were a part of this process. And then creating a shared vision for the future of this particular curricular area. So in year two, the team uses the work from year one to develop or revise curriculum, again, using the Understanding by Design curriculum writing model. And then in year three, year three is focused on reviewing and securing resources in conjunction with the development of learning target progressions and success criteria. In year three, the curriculum written in year two is vetted with faculty, students, caregivers, and administrators. Again, this allows that, another opportunity for both students and family voices. In years four and five, this is the formal implementation of the curriculum and resources. And in order to monitor the curriculum implementation, we developed another tool for departments to identify and capture areas which may need modification either along the way or in preparation for the next curriculum review cycle. I'm going to transition to Sheena.
So as Dr. Maloney mentioned and Dr. Potter mentioned, we've done a ton of work around really digging into the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework and really educating our teachers on what culturally responsive education is. So what is it? Why is it important? And how do we engage in culturally responsive practices? So with that, we've done a lot of work unpacking the actual document that was published by New York State in 2018. Since then, we've worked with teachers to unpack it and really help them understand where they see themselves as stakeholders in that document. At the end of the document, it does a nice job really outlining the role of teachers, the role of students, the role of administrators, and even the role of higher ed in this work. As we've worked with teachers to engage in this document, we've also engaged in practices that we've really prioritized as a district. So community building and academic circles. We have so many teachers now in districts that are trained in facilitating circles. And so Dr. Potter talked about job-embedded PD. We're doing that in the curriculum work that we do with teachers. So we're circling up, and we're having those conversations around, for example, language, culturally responsive resources, how to curate those, and so on. We've also done a lot of work with the New York State, I'm sorry, not New York State, their national standards, the social justice standards, and how they can support culturally relevant and responsive lessons and instruction. What we've found with these standards, and they are actually based on four domains: identity, diversity, justice, and action, we found that where the New York State standards fall short, these standards can supplement that work that we're doing. We've also integrated the New York State Social Emotional Learning Benchmarks. The most recent iteration of that document has equity revisions within it. Those are the ones that we are using. So we've embedded those within our K-5 curriculum. We've also been examining, as teacher teams, we've been examining unit resources through a culturally responsive lens, but really trying to identify what tool are we using? What criteria are we using to determine what, if what we put in front of students is culturally responsive? And so Dr. Maloney referenced that tool that's embedded in our curriculum review cycle. It can feel overwhelming, there's so many resources out there. And so we really tried to hone in on 10 criteria for teachers to reference as they're determining, should this, should this resource, should this textbook, should this document be placed in front of students? Is it appropriate? We've also been utilizing the harmful language protocol that Dr. Potter's office created. This has been hugely helpful as we talk about language and replacement terms. So for example, we're now using the term enslaved. We're now using terms like fugitive seeker, freedom seeker, rather. So replacing that old outdated language to really show students that language is always evolving, and we can do better when we know better. We're also collaborating, our teacher teams are collaborating with each other to develop these lessons. And really, we believe that rather than doing this work to teachers, we do this work with them. So we don't want to give them some prepackaged curriculum or inquiry. We want them to engage in the work and be thought partners for each other. And then ultimately, that last piece there, we are trying to ensure that any sort of experience that our students have, whether it's field trips, guest speakers, other school-based opportunities, that it is equity-based, and that we're looking at this through an equity lens. So again, using the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, our SEL benchmarks, and really our state standards to drive what field trips are we taking and are they aligned to our district priorities. So I'll walk you through sort of grade-level bands and how we've been engaging in this work. For our primary grades, we have done a ton of work around adding more diverse and culturally rich texts that align with the New York State Social Emotional Learning Benchmarks, the CRS framework, and the social justice standards. What you see here is just a sampling. We've adopted dozens of texts. And really, the point of adopting these texts is really, we want to make sure that we're selecting texts that are representative of all the multiple identity groups that we have here in Penfield and the world at large. And I should mention, this was the work of the Humanities Committee for a number of years. We used the article by Rudine Sims Bishop, "Windows, Mirrors, and Sliding Glass Doors." I believe that you're familiar with the article. And so the idea is that students should be able to engage with texts that are mirrors, so they see a reflection of themselves in the literature that they're reading, but also windows, so they have sort of insight into the experiences of others. And then ultimately, sometimes a book is so good that you can step into that world, right, that you're reading about. And this really helps students cultivate empathy for the characters that they're reading about. For our intermediate grades, again, doing work around incorporating culturally diverse texts. We have a unit on world cultures in grade three, and this gives us such an excellent opportunity for students to learn about the unique aspects of cultures around the world. And so we've really adapted some beautiful texts for read-aloud opportunities for students. Grade four has a massive curriculum. They are responsible for teaching numerous standards, obviously not just for social studies, but for all content areas. But really, we've done a ton of work with grade four to look at their units, specific to indigenous groups and the African-American experience, and find ways to incorporate stories of achievement, of resistance, of rebellion, of celebration, of joy, with an emphasis on that replacement language that I talked about, but also being responsive. So New York State, students' first experience with the African-American indigenous experience is with enslavement. And so we've decided as a district that we're going to peel that back, and we're really going to look at the experiences of these people pre-colonization, right? So we're going to look at Africa prior to the colonization of the Europeans. We're going to look at their achievements, their contributions and culture, and how it was such a rich, diverse culture before the exploitation. And then from there, we weave in the stories of resistance and rebellion that often get neglected or marginalized in textbooks. So that's where that resource curation becomes really, really important. Grade five also has a lot of content specific to indigenous populations, the African-American experience. They have a unit on early exploration. They've done a ton of work to fold in multiple perspectives and different points of view. So students are really learning through inquiry and critical thinking and drawing their own conclusions about historical events, which is what we want students to do. But really trying to stay away from that singular narrative, the danger of a single story, that Eurocentric viewpoint that traditionally gets taught. We're trying to take it a step further and really expose students to multiple perspectives and experiences. For our middle school curriculum, our seventh-grade social studies teachers recently, and will continue to in a few weeks here, reviewing their units through that same lens, that culturally relevant and responsive lens, specifically focused on indigenous groups. So their year starts out with indigenous population, westward expansion, the exploitation of those groups. And to their credit, they really wanted to focus on the indigenous resistance efforts to United States imperialism and ways they could fold that in. So that required a day for us to really come together and try to find appropriate resources that would tell that story accurately. We've also used the Teaching Hard History framework. So this is an open source. It's available to anyone, really. And we've used that to, again, fill in the gaps and supplement where the state standards fall short. This evening, you had a presentation by our seventh-grade ELA teachers proposing the adoption of the text Before the Ever After by Jaclyn Woodson. She is a beloved author. We have several of her books at the K-5 level. Students love her book, so really excited about the opportunity for students to have that book. And then our eighth-grade ELA teachers, several years ago, and they continue to revise this unit, developed a unit called Own Voices. And this unit's really exciting because students have choice embedded within this unit. So they're asked to consider how authors influence the way we embrace and think about inclusivity. So there were eight texts that were adopted. You see some here on the screen, but the teachers and the students have reported that they really enjoyed this unit because of that choice, which we know is a culturally responsive practice, when we can embed student choice within lessons. And then at the high school, doing a ton of work as well with our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade social studies teams, starting by unpacking the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Framework, how does this impact them as instructors, but also looking at those social justice standards. So we have beautiful curriculum maps, really K-12, but our high school teachers, every summer, they work on revising those maps. And so we embedded those standards within their maps as well. Our US history classes have been engaging in an inquiry on redlining. This inquiry was actually developed a few years back in partnership with Monroe County Schools. So we had teachers at the table, administrators at the table, developing these inquiries. And students, I've had the opportunity to go into the classrooms and watch students engage with these, with this inquiry, and they're fascinated by it because it's local. It's specific to Rochester and redlining and restrictive covenants, and you see light bulbs go off. Students can't believe that this happened in their own backyard. And so I think that local piece is very powerful. In addition, we had Justin Murphy. He's a former Penfield grad. He writes for the Democrat and Chronicle, and he has a book on redlining. He was able to come in, speak to our 11th-grade classes after they engaged with this inquiry, and then do like a Q&amp;A with the students. And so they were really excited to have that opportunity as well. And then lastly, and really excited about this, we are going to be offering AP African-American Studies starting next year here at the high school. It's an elective. There is no prerequisite. Any student that is interested in taking this course can. They are not required to take the AP exam. There is a final project at the end of the course where students can choose the topic that they want to explore and further investigate. We have a partnership established with SUNY Brockport and their Department of African-American Studies. They have been able to come here and help our teachers as we start to develop the curriculum, curate resources, and really determine for our own professional learning, what do we need to do? What are our next steps to make sure that we're prepared before we get in front of students in the fall and teach this new course? So we're very thankful to SUNY Brockport for that partnership.
Sorry, we both clicked.
Sorry. Hand it over to Dr. Maloney for next steps. So in terms of next steps regarding our culturally responsive curriculum, this work is ongoing. So continuation, continue implementation of the curriculum review process, continue-to-review process focusing on culturally relevant and responsive resources that leverage the rich funds of knowledge our students and families possess. Part of that work includes revising the textbook adoption process. The goal is to align the textbook adoption process to the curriculum review process so that as teams review resources, they are using a culturally responsive lens and incorporating student and family voice. Learning for Justice actually has a document called Reading Diversity Light, a tool for selecting diverse texts, which provides guiding questions for evaluating and selecting resources.
Selecting Diverse Texts, which provides guiding questions for evaluating and selecting resources, which ensure multiple perspectives are represented. This document has been very helpful as we have begun to dig into this work. And then the last bullet, engage faculty in research-based professional learning experiences to cultivate anti-racism and multiculturalism with racially, culturally, and socially diverse perspectives provided. We strive for collaborative work with faculty, and we recognize that job-embedded professional learning, you've heard it multiple times throughout the presentation, is necessary so the faculty have the culturally-responsive and inclusive tools in their toolboxes when instructing and working with students. So, I'm going to shift to Kim Gephar, our Director of STEAM, and she's going to provide some, actually, it's almost job-embedded professional development on the New York State Report Card.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about the first one?
Oh, yes. My apologies. I forgot that I had this slide as well. So, the New York State Report Card. The purpose of the New York State Report Card, and it was recently released, is to enhance transparency and keep families informed about their children's education. And the report cards are released on an annual basis, and they're released for every district in the state as well as for each individual school. And keep an eye out on your mailboxes. Within the next week, you will see this month's prestige come. And my article this month focuses on how to help families navigate the New York State Report Card and all the accessible data. You'll see it listed there from student enrollment and ethnicity, graduation rate, assessment results. It's all incorporated into the New York State Report Card. And it really is, it allows for all districts to be on the same playing field in terms of transparency around the data. So, now I will turn it over to Kim.
Awesome.
Sorry about that, Kim.
It's okay. All right. So, to end our presentation, I got stuck with the data, which I think happened to be because I am a former EP stats teacher. So, I love data, and I'm excited to talk to you about the data. So, here you'll find, we're going to walk you through the New York State Report Card, starting with that anyone can access it at data.nisa.gov backslash parents backslash. We wanted to first start out with the dashboard frequently asked questions. Here you will find a multitude of resources and hyperlink documents that cover questions potentially raised when looking through the data. We wanted to then show you that you can go to the search bar. Here you can go with a specific school. But for our purposes, we're going to start with Penfield as a district. There are two things that you'll see here, first of all, that we wanted to direct you at the 2022-2023 school year. It's really important to start with the most recent data, especially with all the new next-gen standards that we've been implementing. If you scroll down, you'll be able to see that there's a 21-22 at a glance with more of snapshot of what data we can look at. We have student data and we have school data. We're going to first start out with the student data. In here, you'll find that the student data can be separated by gender. You can get more specific and look at the numbers by selecting. It's a very interactive document. We can sort by ethnicity and then by other groups. The only other thing that I wanted to add about student data that I thought was an exciting piece that has been added is that you can also relate it to the county. So, it will sort by Monroe County for the student data. Unfortunately, it does not sort by Monroe County for the school data. School data is only compared to the state. All right. So, now we're going to get into the school data part. School data, we wanted to first start out by highlighting this glossary and guide. The glossary and guide gives more details on what to consider when reviewing the assessment data. It defines key terms and shares specific updates on new examinations. When considering what data to review, there are a few categories you can select, but I would definitely recommend by selecting one or two at a time. Otherwise, the report can be quite large. So, we're going to just highlight what a report can give you. So, this is Grades 3 through 8 English Language Arts results from the 22-23 school year. You'll see that in blue, that is the district results, and then in yellow, it's the compared to the New York State results. You can hover over again for more specific numbers. And then you can see that if you scroll down, you'd be able to see all the different grade If you scroll even more down, you'll be able to see a breakdown of each grade into different subgroups. Another question that comes up during 3-3 testing is how credible the data is when there are students who did not test. The school report card will also show you the number and percent of students who did not test on each grade level. And then here are the subgroups that you can look at while looking at the data. We're really excited about this tool because it, again, focuses on that transparency. We want, if you have that passion like I do in terms of data and looking into it, you can spend hours looking at the school report card. When reviewing the school report card data, we wanted you to remember a few things. The results of the 22-23 Grades 3 through 8 ELA and math assessments represent student achievement on the new next-gen learning standards. Because the tests measure different learning standards, the results are not comparable to those of prior years. We're going to dive more into the proficiency levels, but levels of proficiency for, will be levels three and four, or levels three, four, and five, depending on the assessment. Another thing to remember when reviewing school report card data, the idea of not tested includes students whose families opted them out or students who were absent during the administration of the test. Because of the acceleration in eighth grade, many students are not required to take New York State Eighth Grade Math Assessment or New York State Eighth Grade Science Assessment as they take a Regents' Exam, and that can result in skewed data. Annual Regents' Examinations results are those administered, annual Regents' Examination results are those administered in August, January, and June of the reporting year. All Regents' Exams were administered in 22-23, except the August 22 and January 23 Regents' Examinations in US History and Government. I wanted to quickly highlight the ideas behind the performance level descriptions, or what we refer to them as the PLDs. The state has released a guidance document that explains the performance level descriptions, or PLDs, and how districts can use them to guide their instruction. In Penfield, we are having discussions on how the PLDs can help with differentiating instruction, aid in assessment design, and use as a tool to track student growth along the proficiency continuum as described by the PLDs. For Grades 3 through 8, proficiency is considered a Level 3 or Level 4. At the Regents' level, you'll notice that we have five levels. As we look at the data, we typically start with how students are doing with scoring at the proficiency level. The New York State Education Department has shared that the PLDs are essential in setting performance standards, or the COT scores, for New York State assessments. Personally, I can share with my work on writing the Algebra 1 Regents' Exam, we use PLDs in question development. From there, the test is built using a variety of PLD levels for each standard. The performance level descriptions has been a great addition as we continue to embed the new standards for each of our state tests. For the Regents' Exam, you'll notice that the proficiency is considered a Level 3, a Level 4, and a Level 5. So, you're going to see as we dive into the data a little more that we're going to highlight levels of proficiency. So, we wanted to make sure that we understood what proficiency meant. All right. So, now we're going to end on looking at 3 through 8 New York State Assessment highlights. What you'll notice is that this takes it one step further than the school report card. We actually were able to look at how we ranked in terms of Monroe County and the 18 school districts that are embedded there. So, in math, the percentage of students scoring proficiency for Grade 4 and Grade 5 ranked number one in all of Monroe County. 100% of the students who took the Algebra Regents' Exam in eighth grade scored proficiency. I think the nice thing, what spoke out to me about that one is that we clearly are doing a good job at identifying students in the acceleration process. In ELA, the percentage of students scoring proficient in Grade 4 ranked number one in all of Monroe County. And then lastly, in science, again, our eighth graders who are taking living environment, scored, 100% of those students scored proficiency. And then lastly, we wanted to highlight a few things on the Regents' Exam. All New York State Regents' Examinations in 22-23, for all New York State Regents' Exams in 22-23, the percent of students scoring proficiency and the percent of students scoring mastery exceeded the New York State percentages, which we're excited about that one. The percentage of students scoring proficient for physics ranked number three in Monroe County. And then the percentage of students scoring proficiency for global history and algebra ranked number four in all of Monroe County.
So, there is certainly a breadth of information in the state report card. As Kim mentioned, you could dig for days and analyze and really go through the data. A couple of other pieces to note. For enrollment data, the enrollment data is, how that information is gathered is literally at the time of enrollment. So, when a family registers with the district and paperwork is completed, that's where that information is gathered and then put into our system, and then from our system, it goes to State Ed. And another piece of information, looking at this data, keep in mind the pandemic having been only in 2020 and then impacting the 2020-21 school year. And when families look at the data and you're digging in, I highly recommend those two documents that Kim highlighted, the FAQ, which is on the parent dashboard, as well as the glossary and guide. Both of those documents speak specifically to how the pandemic impacted specific data points. And so, I think it's important as you're looking at data to keep all of that in mind. And the website is listed there again. All New York State districts and schools are available to view. And it really, the website makes it very easy to dig in to an individual district or school's data, as well as to compare districts or schools. So, again, watch your mailboxes next week as the latest agenda of the prestige should be arriving. And again, my article outlines the specific steps we shared tonight on how to access the New York State School Report Card, in addition to how the data is beneficial for families. So, this wraps up our presentation on the state of the district, and we recognize that we shared a lot of information. We really want the community and the board to see how the priorities of the culturally-responsive sustaining education framework, they really were the springboard for the core commitments of the Equity Long Range Plan. And both the priorities and the core commitments have built the foundation of a culturally-responsive infrastructure. It all contributes to shaping the whole student, as Dr. Putnam started us off with. So, with that, any questions?
Board member, questions or comments?
175.
With all of that, no call? Do you want to start us off? Okay. I have a lot, but I'll just, I'll start with two and then let somebody else talk. So, SEL. Do all of the schools have an SEL block?
So, we have, last year with our schedule, our master schedule, during the 22-23 school year, we identified an SEL block at the elementary level, so K-5. So, this is the second year now that we've had an SEL block, an SEL block at the elementary level. As Devne referenced, we also have community building at the high school, here at Penfield High School, but we are continuing to identify ways to support our SEL development and implementation at Bay Trail. So, it's a work in progress. But we have determined space at the elementary level where it happens daily.
Okay. But so, right now, the only school that doesn't have that block is the middle school.
Yes. We're working, we're working to identify a way to incorporate at Bay Trail.
Okay. And to be fair, the high school doesn't have that block like elementary does, where it's every day. It's a community building, you know, on a schedule.
A spot.
Yeah.
It's got a spot. Yeah. Okay. And then, and then secondly, the DASA data, DASA?
Yes.
DASA. So, I know that middle school can be brutal in the best of circumstances. But so, does, but the data was kind of high, I think even higher than the high school. So, is that unusual? You know, like I said, middle school is a tough time, no matter where you go. But so, is our, is our data in proportion to everybody else's data in middle school? Or is something going on, is something going on at Bay Trail that we should know about?
I'm going to hop in, because I want to be honest, is that, and I've shared this twice in board meetings as we've looked at this data. It does, material incidents do get reported to the state. And so, that sort of has, that started when DASA, the federal law, came into play. Districts, including Penfield, sort of were trying to figure out, how do we document this? What is the state going to want? And so, if you look at our numbers, even in those charts, you can't make a comparison to where we are this year and where we were last year, because a lot of it is what we submitted to the state. So, at the end of last school year, when we had to submit, which is over the summer, our DASA incidents, our discriminatory situations that took place that were material, we made the stance, and Dr. Potter's team has done an incredible job, training our administrators and teachers and really saying, we're not going to back away from this. So, anytime there's a material incident, there's a team involved to verify, to make sure that the student gets, the victim gets the support they need. Hopefully, it's a restorative practice conversation where the offender can also learn something that it wasn't necessarily out of hate, or hatred, or anger, but hopefully, there's a learning experience there because we do deal with kids, and they do make mistakes. But I want to share, and be honest with it, because we submitted much more very clear numbers to the state. So, when we look at our like climate and culture survey that's tied to material incidents in DASA, you know, our numbers are going to be higher. I'll tell you that when it comes out, and probably for next year when we submit this year, I wouldn't be surprised if our numbers are higher than area county schools. It's not that they're not reporting. It's just that we took a desire to say that if we're going to have an equity plan, we're going to focus on culturally responsive, we're going to say out loud, we want a safe space for every kid to feel like they can truly learn, then we're also going to document every incident and make sure that we take actions. They might be consequences. They might be restorative practices and consequences, but we want that learning to occur. So, I will tell you that as a district, when DASA started, that New York State went around and tried to audit folks from the state level just to see, do people understand DASA? Are they actually meeting the letter of the law? And I would say most districts weren't because it's a process. There's paperwork. There's process. It takes individuals. It takes time. And in an elementary school and a middle school, and also the high school, but primarily elementary, middle, kids say things that are mean. They don't necess, they aren't mean kids. They don't necessarily mean to be mean, but they say things. And so, it's not about sort of brushing it under the rug, but really grabbing onto the transparency of saying, we're going to, we're going to document it all, and if it's material, we're going to submit it to the state and say, this is where we're at, and sort of give a baseline. And I really see a lot of this as post-COVID, is the baseline data of where we have to grow out of. So, I, as an educator, won't go as far to say and pick on middle school, although sometimes it is because there's a lot of things going on in middle school, just with the age of the student, with hormones and everything else. It is interesting. They go from being little kids in elementary school to big kids at middle school before they go to the high school. We're not out of line, I would say, with any other middle school in the area. Last year, when we dealt with a lot of behaviors at our K-5 level, that one thing that came out of that was a conversation with assistant principal we've added. We were not alone with that either. Most of the county schools that we talk to regularly, but also the state and nationally, they're seeing a lot of that impact, what I would say is post-COVID, but also just we're becoming, and our students are becoming more in tuned with the fact that you shouldn't be saying mean things. You shouldn't be picking on people. You shouldn't be discriminatory. So, a learning curve that we have to keep going back to, to educate our students and our staff. But I would tell you that, and I would let Dr. Potter or anyone else answer too, is we're not out of the ordinary in Penfield. What we are going to do that might be different is we're going to transparently document it, share it with the state and with our community in our DASA reporting.
And I think the other piece is, now that we have really developed a system for reporting, I mean, part of creating safe spaces for students is allowing safety for them to report. And so the more that they're comfortable with reporting to say that the environment that I'm experiencing in school doesn't feel safe, we want to encourage that. And that's another reason why you may also see our numbers increasing in the way that we need to report via SSEC. So I think that that, the work that we've been doing will continue to do, but it's, it's really an opportunity for us to hold ourselves accountable and provide a voice for our students and ensure that, you know, that where they're coming to school on a daily basis should be safe for them, and if it's not, they need to tell us, so that we can help to, to make it safe for them.
And so, so just to loop and then I'll stop talking. So a way of addressing, like I said, you know, kids shouldn't be saying mean things to each other, does that primarily happen through these sort of SEL blocks in the elementary school and the community days and the high school, and something yet to be determined in the middle school? Is that how, so once we have this data, now what, kind of thing? I guess that's what I'm asking.
So I think that what we've been doing, and we meet on a monthly basis with our principals, we have what is titled our Equity and Access Meetings. We talk about our work with DASSA. I was actually just with principals yesterday during Superintendent's Conference Day, talking about DASSA, talking about documentation for, as well as constantly engaging in conversations with principals around changing and supporting the culture and the climate of their schools. So what that looks like at the elementary level is, is different, of course, than what it looks like at the secondary level, but having regular conversations around shifting. One of the things I can say, in partnership with the Children's Institute, in September, we opened the year talking about what harmful language looked like, as aligned with our district code of conduct. So we had student assemblies and we talked about, you know, what it means to be in a space that feels harmful, but more importantly, how do you respond to that? And we used our harmful language protocol around saying something, you know, encouraging those around you to report something when something feels uncomfortable. So I feel like there are steps in process, and it is a work in progress, and we'll continue to, to work collaboratively with our building leaders to, to address the, the school culture and climates.
And I would just add too, in terms of, when we look at like, the SEL block at elementary, community days at the high school, work at Bay Trail, that, that's one spot where maybe it is very detailed, explained and talked through, but it's also that our educators and professional development, they're getting, that learning about, more and more teachers are becoming trained in restorative circles and academic circles. So a lot of this is also, goes back to our code of conduct, which all schools had presentations on and students did, lovely posters hanging around, thank you, with the QR code where you can go and look at it for any guest that comes in. So it's really that embedded piece, it's not necessarily the sit down and I'm gonna teach you how to be nice, because again, they're kids, but we want to really put out there that everybody, just like New York State says and should be, that everybody should feel safe coming to school, everybody should be who they want to be in school and, and have their own personality. And if that doesn't align with how you feel about the world, that's okay, you just can't then say things or, or, or target or, or go after somebody because they're, they're different. And so it's a lot of those conversations, you know, ongoing. And it's tough with the, with the DASSA piece, you know, you look back, it is still, it's been around for over 10 years, but it's still relatively new for many districts in the sense of it's documenting those things, those situations and incidents that may not have been documented in a very formal way. Sometimes as two kids, maybe somebody says something in the hallway, an administrator overhears it, they pull them in, they talk right there, they're okay, kids shake hands. But, and that's great if it was really taken care of in that moment, but many times, it, it isn't taken care of. Though, you know, students will say what they need to say to get back out to the, to their peers. And so us slowing things down, Dr. Potter's great work with training all of our principals, making sure they're aware, is that, you know, when those things happen, we're still gonna document, and then circle back and look in and make sure that things are, are really getting better.
And ultimately, our goal is to not have SEL just live in a block.
Yeah.
Right? Like, it really should be something that we're, we're able to see happening throughout the whole day, right, for the whole student. So, you know, this really helps us share with you where we're at currently, so our current state. We have a future state, and part of that future state is outlined in our Equity Long Range Plan. So over the next several years, even though you've heard me say before, it's not by 28, you know, 2028 that we'll feel that we'll be done, it's just we know that we want to be closer towards achieving the things that we've set out in our collective commitments.
Anyone else? Me? Sure?
It's up to you to decide, yeah.
Yes, Madam President. Good? All right, thank you. So Tom, you answered, because my question was, have DASSA reports increased? And you said yes, because of the way they're being reported now, and there's more transparency to it.
Yeah. And I think the other, the other piece I'll add, and it wasn't clear, is that in, in 100%, we want students and their families to know how to report DASSA. You can do that through our website, you can email directly and let us know, but also our staff in, in the DASSA law is around that if we see something, or we have the knowledge that there could be something going on, harassment, bullying, then we as adults need to address it and do that through the DASSA process. So I do think you'll see increased numbers. I'll, I'll go, I, I can't prove it to you, but all those actions have been having, happening, so while the, the number on the piece of paper might look like it's more, I would tell you, the incident is the same, that the number of incidents is probably the same as it was in the past, but now we're really gonna say, we're documenting it and we're going to be transparent about it and say, this is where we're at and why we're doing the work we're doing. I do think also that any public school that stands up and says, we don't have bullying in our district, or we don't have harassment in our district, is, is not being honest and transparent with what, what really is happening.
Thank you. So my second question was, I know as a district, we did not want to adopt anybody else's curriculum, right? We wanted to create our own curriculum. And for, and I understand, like, this curriculum should have been present 10 years ago.
Sure.
Okay? And I know everything takes time, and I'm understanding a little bit more why we wanted to create our own curriculum. And the main reason being, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we wanted the teachers to be a part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? We wanted them to be active participants in creating it, not just being told, here's curriculum, do the thing. Okay? So having said that, are our teachers learning new things about curriculum and just about history and life? Are they learning new things personally? How is that going? Do they believe in it? What, what's their feedback?
I can start. I can, I can say that part of curriculum work, I think the curriculum work of the past was very much, we're going to work through our understanding by design stages and build stage one, the assessment evidence, and then the learning target progressions. But what we've tried to shift to is embedding that job-related professional learning. So I can think now of several occasions where, you know, we've utilized Learning for Justice articles, for example, around language, around, you know, historical events, and really trying to circle up, have conversations around that, to further their learning on certain topics. It's not perfect, right? We have, of course, professional learning opportunities available to teachers that are not necessarily required, they can sign up on their own volition. But we have worked to try to incorporate some of that professional learning related to culturally responsive education within the curriculum writing that they do when we come together during release days, for example. We actually just recently did an, well, not recently, this was last year, where we met with the fifth grade teachers and we talked about whose history matters, and we learned about, you know, why is it that we only typically have Columbus's perspective, right, of the exploration of the Americas? And we talked about the Tainan people and how nobody really knows who the Tainan people are. And so that was sort of a light bulb moment for them, that these were the people that were exploited, and they were people, and they had a culture. And actually, Columbus talks about how the culture was very rich, despite the fact that he then went ahead and persecuted these people and decimated this population. So you could see that was in the moment, learning for teachers, we were like, I didn't even know what Tainan was until we just talked about this. So it, it, we, we try to make it happen sort of naturally, organically, to what they're working on in that moment, but it's always an area for improvement. I, I would agree with you. Yeah.
I think, though, over the past several years, we, Dr. Maloney and I have been very intentional around the work that we do with the instructional leadership team. So we start every month with intentional professional learning, even for our leaders, that's tied to the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. And it's really kind of disrupting the traditional ways that we think about education and move towards something that feels more responsive to all of the students that we're serving. And so what happens with our instructional leaders is that they then, as a result of participating, you know, we, you talk about the examination of how you show up in the work, both personally and professionally. Because I think if we're not making that personal connection, there's no way that you're gonna be able to stand in front of students and professionally be able to influence change. So they, as leaders, participate, and then as a result of that, they move and turnkey that learning to their faculty. And that's been in place for now almost three years. So that has really been the structure that we've created to support the new learning. So whether it's an article, whether it's a conversation, whether it's restorative dialogue that really helps them kind of situate their thinking and their instructional practice moves to be different and aligned with all of our students, not just some of our students. I think that that traditional way of approaching education has us now being different and showing up differently for our students. But again, it's a work in progress. Have we arrived? No. But we continue to think about what it means to, to be in this work, and again, holding ourselves as a district accountable every time that we come together to learn. That's that professional learning that's job embedded.
I think we will never arrive. However, we can arrive with the culture, with the attitude.
That's right.
Because changes are only constant. So we know that this is gonna change, and it's gonna keep changing, and how are we going to approach that? So we can arrive with the attitude, with the open-mindedness, with the communication. Yeah.
And I, I wanted to, two points that I wanted to share relative to your question. We are very fortunate in the Monroe County region. We have incredible higher ed collegial organizations that, what, the red lighting unit that Sheena talked about, that one was led by the Hughes Project, correct? Which the U of R spearheaded. Our BOCs has, both of our BOCs, Monroe One, Monroe Two, they have worked together to bring curriculum directors and teachers together to develop units, develop lessons, curate and review some of the curriculum that is out there that, and, and then we have worked to make it our own and, and develop that job embedded in professional development to help our teachers as they implement the curriculum. And then the other piece to your question that I wanted, I, while I don't have a solid number or piece of data to say, this is the number of faculty, or this is the percentage of faculty, but what I have been so incredibly impressed by over the pa, over the past few years, are the number of people that we are interviewing who are saying, I want to come here because of the work that I know the district is doing. And to me, that speaks volumes. When people are, many people looking to leave jobs that they currently hold in other schools to come here because of this work.
And I think the other thing that I just want to reference is, you know, we started the, the presentation with this comprehensive approach, and I want to just kind of bring us back to that, because it really is us trying to touch every facet of our system. You know, when it comes to how does a student feel when they come to school, what is a student learning when they come to school, how is the, the building, you know, welcoming our students when they come to school? It's all of these things. And, you know, when you think about just the curricular pieces, you know, Sheena was able to kind of walk through where over the past, you know, two plus years, we've looked at every single grade level. Is there something that, you know, that is happening every month? Or is there an opportunity within a unit that they're experiencing something every month? That's what we've been looking to do. We've been trying to find all of the ways to have culturally responsive and sustaining education be present in all of the things that we're teaching and all of the things that our students are learning. So I think that's one of the places that I really want to just place some emphasis on, it's, it's been comprehensive and it's been holistic.
Thank you. Mark?
First, I want to tell you how much I appreciate having all the work you've done to put this together as a, as a comprehensive presentation. You know, we, throughout the years and many years, we talk about a lot of these aspects of it, but this was nice that it really plugs it all together and, and talks about how all these things fit together, in things like, you know, culturally, culturally responsive, you know, it, how many parts that fits into. And so there's so many things I could say about this, and I'm just going to touch on one or two parts, which is actually something completely different, which is the report card. And I, I appreciate the explanation of the, what the report card means and, and how we compare it to our peers. Because when I saw the report card came out, I talked, when I sent it up to Tom, I said, hey, we should talk about this, because, you know, we're in, we live in a world today where if you don't rank someone five stars, everyone gets into a panic. And, you know, that's, that's just where we are. So you see this and you see levels of proficiency, and you started thinking, hmm, what does this mean? Is this, are these warning signs? So, you know, that's someone's definition, someone's speak, and, and people who aren't used to that are reading it, interpreting it in their own sense of, of meaning. So I appreciate that. And, and, you know, I, you know, I think it is important to understand that we've had changes where you can't compare year one, you know, this year to last year. And, and it's, and that's really the main thing. That was, that was the thing that was most important to me, was understanding what that means and where are we really when we look at proficiency levels that are, you know, whatever, 50%, 60%? You know, that's not failing, it's not people are failing, it's just they didn't get 100% of the, of the body of knowledge in place, is what you're telling me. So I think that's important, I think that's important that we continue to communicate out, to help our community understand, really understand where we are and how, how we're doing, how their students are doing, when they look at these things that are in some academic terms from Aldi. So, yeah, thank you.
I have another question. Preston?
I'm okay.
Me? Okay. I was waiting to see if Catherine. Okay. The, if I remember right, the slide with, it was for middle school, it had Trevor Noah's book on it. And I thought I heard you say that in eighth grade, there's sort of a choice of different books that they could choose from. And I, and I guess I'm sort of trying to remember my own kid's experience. So I, I think I remember my middle schooler, he's in eighth grade now, I think he's read one book with an African-American author, and my high schooler, who's in 11th grade, has read one book with an African-American author. So I guess I'm concerned with the choice, I, I guess I'm wondering about the books that are, you don't have a choice, you're reading this. This is important American literature, that you can't graduate middle school without knowing Steinbeck, you know? So, so how does some literature get to be, you gotta know this, and, and some literature get to be a choice? And how come there are so few authors of color that are obligatory?
So I, I think a couple of things. So I, I will say we recognize that as an area of growth. I know, I'm just thinking of high school and how we engaged in a process at the high school last year, it was sort of a textbook adoption process that we were piloting with students, we included students in that process. Dr. Rudes, our assistant principal, was a part of that, I was on that along with ELA teachers. I was on that along with ELA teachers. And it was really a beautiful thing. There were a number of diverse authors that were represented. We had like six or seven books that we all read. Kids took home with them, they read. And then, we came to the table and we really used that criteria, the diversity light tool from Learning for Justice to, and the ELA standards. Teachers feel very strongly that there still needs to be those standards that are present when we select texts. And from that, we were able to get really high-interest, engaging texts. And I believe the book that they adopted was Patron Saints of Nothing. And so, and I believe that main protagonist is a Hispanic character. And so, I guess my point being, we know it's an area of growth, and we're trying to build systems to do just that. We have recently, this year, been revising our textbook adoption process that I think is going to push people more in that direction and challenge them in terms of when they're reviewing texts. You know, what is the criteria that you're using? Are these non-dominant populations that you're elevating? Are these, you know, voices of maybe marginalized groups that have assets and strengths that we should be showcasing in our curriculum? So, we recognize that it would be a beautiful thing if every unit that we had for ELA embedded choice. Sometimes there's an opportunity for that, sometimes there isn't. But, we know it's an area we need to improve, and we're actually really excited in the work that we've been able to do this year with textbook adoption, specific to making sure we're adopting more culturally relevant texts for students to have in front of them.
That aren't a choice, that this is, we're communicating.
Exactly.
This is important American literature.
Exactly.
Well, I wanted to say, she usually has a comma. I wanted to say thank you for the presentation. It was really thoughtful, you know, showed collaboration, it was inclusive with all processes. Thank you for guiding us through that report card. I mean, I think it's something that people, you know, online or that are watching this can go back and like look through, which would really help them to understand it. So, that was great. And, you know, I could just say, my past self, so when I was a kid, I wish, you know, that this was in practice, this was something that was happening. Because then maybe, you know, I would have felt more included in my educational process. So, just thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like you to talk for another hour. Myself. No, I just want to say thank you very, very much to both Dr. Potter, Dr. Maloney, our incredible directors, Dabney. And it really is this, this, the amount of work we do behind the scenes, and we joke about this many times over the summer, that like, you know, we're still working, like that, there's not a building that's empty all summer long. And a lot of that work, curriculum work, review work, meeting with staff, happens. And so, I think that you really did a nice job, this whole team, working together to break down silos, instead of doing a presentation one day on DASSA, a presentation another day on the report card. It is all really intertwined with what we're doing, focused on research and focused on truly supporting every kid to live in that world beyond the walls of high school, which is much different than when we all left high school. And so, you know, even the career piece, the critical thinking, I think it's, it's really important. And same with our staff. You ask about like teachers, and what are they feeling? Well, they're, they're just like, they're everywhere. Because it's a lot of work to dig in and think differently about how you taught. I've been out of the classroom for a while, but even there, I look back, and I'll pick on Sheena as a former history teacher, will look back and both say like, oh, if I could have gone back, I would have done that differently 15 years ago. But, you know what you know, and you're learning. And so, we also are okay with staff questioning and asking questions and being a little uncomfortable with new learning, because that's part of the process for, our students have to grow, our staff have to grow, our leaders have to grow. And again, you look at that report card, and again, just huge kudos to our students, our teachers, and our families in terms of, again, we're a high-performing district, we'll continue to be a high-performing district. But, what I'm always proud of at Penfield is we're more than that. It's not just the score we're looking for, it's not the Yelp review. It is really our kids walking out with this feeling of others, understanding that empathy, the kindness, and really the critical thinking skills, which will help them wherever they decide to go after. So, a tremendous amount of work, your presentation really made it sound easy. I know how much work it is behind the scenes. I just truly thank you very much for everybody who presented tonight. And you guys are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. Dr. Maloney and Dr. Potter, you don't have a choice, but if anybody else wants to sneak out.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes special reports.
I wanted to yell, Dabney, congratulations. I was going to yell, Dabney, congratulations. Student rep?
My turn. So, in terms of district-wide updates, we had yesterday off, yes, three-day weekend. And, PHS students have a three-day week because Friday is off again. Unfortunately, elementary and middle schoolers don't get that privilege. That's an older students' thing, but they'll get there. Thursday night is the Penfield High School and Bay Trail Combined Jazz Concert. And, Rock Therapy Dogs have been making rounds through schools in the district. I was very happy to see that. At PHS, we have a senior who won the School for American Crafts Ceramics Award. I saw her sculpture, it was fantastic. Course selections for the 2024-2025 school year have begun. And students taking public speaking gave their "this, I believe" speeches, and all of the students in the school were welcome to, if they had a study hall or a lunch, be in attendance so that they could have practice with more public speaking. The Nordic Ski Team, as we speak, is competing at Shadow Pines tonight, so wish them luck mentally. And tomorrow and next week, Girl Up is watching Little Women 2019 because they're women, and there's a lot of them. On January 31st, we will hold a blood drive in the West Gym here. And, the Drama Club has sponsored a free screening of a short film by a previous PHS student, which will be playing at the Little Theater on February 4th. At Bay Trail, sixth graders got to see Miss Santoro and Mr. Doi have a lip sync battle during their lunch. And, a member of the cast of Ain't Too Proud, which is a Broadway show coming to Rochester, will be giving a workshop at Bay Trail in February. So, that's awesome. Pinterest Club is making stress balls. And, high school counselors visited eighth-grade students to answer questions they had about high school course selection. At Scribner, lots of field trips. On Friday, kindergarten classes will visit the Jewish Community Center to learn about cultural appreciation. And next week, second graders will go to RMSC. At Indian Landing, they will have their Ayo Lego Night on Friday. And, at Harris Hill, they had their first general PTA meeting of 2024 last week. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We, and just so the board knows, Helen's going to leave now.
Helen is going to leave.
Can you smile for us?
Thank you so much.
Brace is off, it's a big deal, so, awesome, thank you. Just a few student-staff honors. We'll talk a little bit about our calendar for next year, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for some business updates as we continue down the path of building the budget for 2425. Science grant, Kimberly Gebhardt, our director of STEAM, just left, but her and Shane Waterson are TOSA for STEAM. Congrats on being awarded an $8,000 grant from Bosch Corporation to support STEM programming. And these funds are going to be used to purchase mystery science kits for grades K5, open science ed for grades 6, 8, and storyline pilots for grades 6 to 12. So, great, working to find a grant. And just kudos and celebration, and thanks, obviously, to the Bosch Corporation for supporting education. Girl Up fundraiser, they raised $3,600 this fall to install a rainwater collection tank at a school in Uganda. And the tank was recently installed and now supplies water to an entire school and community. And again, I just, these are the things when we talk about, you know, social justice and change and looking at the world beyond just Penfield, these are high school kids really working to, to make the world a better place. And that's, you know, beyond the walls of what you know here, and I just think, kudos again. Speaking of kudos, there's a long list in your agenda of our holiday giving, so all of these activities that took place across the district over the December-January timeframe. Lots of incredible things, again, that I think that showcases just how much our students do beyond just their academic work and their citizenship in Penfield, but really in terms of understanding and supporting causes in Penfield and beyond. So, just thank you very much to our incredible students and club advisors. A little bit about the school calendar. So, we're a little early. Typically, over the last few years, I bring it to the board in February, depending. So, what I'm going to show you is still in draft form. The process is that we bring it to the board, and then we review it, the community will see it now, and then any questions or comments, they can reach out directly to me. And then, the next meeting, we hope to bring you the finalized calendar, ready to vote on for the school year next year. So, this is just a list of those key dates. These won't tip, most likely change, but, so I share this especially with folks who are ready to, I don't know, book a cruise for next April, or just want to know what the schedule looks like. So, for right now, we've got first day of teachers is August 28th. They'll have two days of conference days, and then, we plan to start students and teachers again, but our students' first day would be the September 3rd. That's the Tuesday after Labor Day. So, sometimes it's the Wednesday. This is a really interesting calendar year because Labor Day is really early, and then the last raiding day from the state is very late in June. So, it's going to be in early September, late June. There is a, there is a positive that I think falls in there. So, we do have a conference day in October, like we typically do. We're looking at, really digging into our K5 conference days. Those are the days that our K5 students don't have school, but the teachers are able to run a conference to meet with parent, guardian, caregiver, about the child, one-on-one conversations, detailed. And we've been doing that for a while and using one day in November. And the feedback really from K5 staff, but also from families, is we wish we had a little bit more time. Because they are, they are short, they have to keep to a timeframe to get through 22 students in one day. It's difficult. So, this year, we're looking at what a couple other districts around us have done, which was we're trying to build two K5 conference days. We have them right now, and this is one I will be bringing to PAB and just sort of seeking some K5 parent update. It's tricky where Veterans Day falls to have a day off again, because then you potentially have like a three days of school. So, right now, we're looking at having our K5 student conference days the two days before Thanksgiving break. So, Thanksgiving break is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We're looking at next year having Monday and Tuesday, students wouldn't have school, so teachers can conference on those two days. It is two days in a row. We've also looked at doing like two separate Fridays in the month. I don't thi, regardless of it's two separate Fridays or two days in a row, that's what we're really trying to dig into and see what's best. Mark?
So, is that just for the K5?
That's just K5, yep. And the two days would be just for the first conference, there's another conference in the spring. But, at that point, if there have been concerns or any conversations, a lot more, I mean, you can conference with your teacher at any time, it doesn't always have to be in the conference day, but obviously, that's a day we set aside to really allow teachers and families to have that time to meet. But then, in March, it would just be one conference day, not two. The Thanksgiving recess, Wednesday before Thanksgiving is not actually necessarily a holiday, but many people refer to it as Pie Day, because I think that's when people bake pies or something before Thanksgiving. But, we have typically always had that Wednesday off, so we look to have that, those three days at Thanksgiving for all staff and students. Here is the holiday recess, that's that December recess. The way that it works now is that the county calendar would have kids come back the Thursday after New Year's. So, you would be off for a week, but then you'd come back Thursday and Friday and then have a weekend. Across Monroe County, districts are saying this is, that's hard to get subs in, it's hard to ensure that people are here, if you've got, so this will be a year we are looking to have two full weeks in that December-January break, as opposed to trying to bring everybody back on a Thursday for two days after a significant holiday with travel. So, that's where it gets a little bit tricky. We start early, we end late, but at the end of the day, it's that two weeks there. There is a 9/12 conference day, as our student rep shared, it's just for the older kids. And that really is a regents raiding day. So, this week we're in right now, years ago, we didn't have school for any high school kid. They would only come in for their local midterm exam or their regents exam. And over time, many districts backed away from that because we don't actually offer that many regents exams in January. So, students who need to retake an exam are taking exams. There are some students, like our double-accelerated math, where they take Algebra II for the first semester and pre-calc the second semester. Those students will be, will be taking the regents in January. But, we can pull those kids, have the regents exam take place in school, and still have students coming to school and attending, because it's not like in June when we have, you know, thousands of regents exams being given. So, again, but that Friday is considered a raiding day, and we utilize that for 9 through 12 conference day for teachers, because some have to grade, some have to make sure that the regents grading is done, and then preparing for that transition to semester courses. The new one for us this year, when I say us, I mean everybody in New York State, is the Lunar New Year. And so, the Lunar New Year is based on the phases of the moon. This year, it, this current year we're in, it fell on a Saturday. Next year, it is on January 29th, and this is a new New York State holiday. And so, students cannot attend school that day. Teachers, we are playing around with any new holiday that's at, it's not a new holiday, it's a new holiday for New York State schools. There's obviously a lot of questions on what can happen during that day. And so, our understanding in terms of talking to the state and other districts and legal counsel, is that it could be used as a teacher day, but it couldn't count towards there, it would be for like a contractual. So, every district has a different number of days that teachers have to be at work per their contract. Penfield's is 187, with Day 188, which is considered sort of a floating day. So, it would be sometime in the summer, teachers have to come in, just about every teacher comes in more than once over the summer to get their classroom ready. So, it's 187. Sometimes, we are able to build a calendar with 188, and then it would just be a conference day in the beginning of the school year. And I'm able to say to all of the teachers, one of those three days you're coming in for won't be touched. We won't do any PD, we don't, we won't do any district stuff, you have a day, and it counts as their Day 188. This year, we'll probably have that floating Day 188 that's teachers' use in the summer. But, I share that because the Lunar New Year, we've talked with teachers' union, they, we could have a day there, but it would, it wouldn't be a PD day, it wouldn't be really a conference day, it would just be a workday. And so, I don't want to bring folks in without any sort of direction, they can do the Day 188 in the summer, that would work best for them. So, that Lunar New Year would be a 10-month holiday. So, not everybody's off that day. You know, 12-month staff could take a vacation day if they wanted to, but it's really the 10-month teaching staff and students. February recess is in the typical spot. We are looking at, that's the conference day, March 7th, should say, that's what I got to check, it should just say, I believe, K5, because that's the second conference day for K5 students, not K8. Spring recess is there, it's one week, it embeds, the end of that week is Easter. Some districts around and some of our contracts have Good Friday needing to be off, and so that is, that Friday is within the week of break. And then, regents exams you'll see start June 17th. In the middle of that is Juneteenth, which will be a day off, a holiday in New York State, and that'll be off that day. Graduation is scheduled for June 25th. And then, last day for K8 right now is June 25th. Last day for teachers across the district would be June 27th. So, the big ones, I think, in terms of, if you're looking, this is not approved yet, the board has not approved it yet, but I'm comfortable saying the December recess, the February recess, the spring recess, and the first day for students are very unlikely to change between now and next board meeting. So, if anybody is watching and wants to, I don't know, book a trip or something, this would be fine. Those are pretty solid, we just need to work through our days. So, we have, right now, built in two snow days, and then, you know, and that's what we've had the last couple of years, we tried to get three snow We tried to get three snow days, but it's tough to, it's tough to do that in this calendar. My very long presentation on calendar, but does anybody have questions about, about calendar? Awesome. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Good evening, community. Tonight, we're going to review some preliminary revenue information from the state. So we'll look at our preliminary calculation for the tax cap, that local levy limit that dictates how much funding we can raise from our community by way of real property taxes. Tonight, we have the state of the district. We'll zoom out and look a little bit at the New York State Executive Proposal, the State of the State, specifically around what Governor Hochul proposed for education aid and what it means for Penfield Central. And then we also have on your meeting docket this evening, three approval items. One is an organizational item. So organizational items are typically what we do at the reorg meeting in July. We always appoint district council, district attorney firms that we use. Some of the attorneys at one of the firms that special ed uses and HR uses are moving to a different firm. So we just need to appoint the new firm to be able to use them when they transition their employment. We did come to an agreement on the land sale. So we did have a couple of proposals for that Atlantic Ave parcel. The board has indicated they want to move forward with the high proposal that we received. So that's in your packet this evening. We think, you know, it's going to be a win-win for everybody. UPK modifications. So this is a contractual reassignment to one of our UPK providers. One of our UPK providers sold their business to another UPK provider, another one of our UPK providers. So it's pretty seamless in terms of the front end of things, but for the back end, we have to have the board reapprove or reassign the contract to the new company. But nothing changes. It's still the same amount of per pupil funding that comes from the state by way of the UPK grant. So those are the three approval items, and then we'll review some budget things. So just, you know, this is kind of the first real budget discussion we have for the 24-25 calendar year. We've talked about the calendar. We've talked about reserves. We've gone over the budget development goals, guidelines, and factors. Internally, we've put out our budget requests to departments and buildings, and we're trying to synthesize through all that. So tonight, this meeting, we're really going to look at revenue projections. And then at our next meeting, we'll have more of a conversation around the expenditure side of the budget. And then the vote day is our first reminder, a steady drumbeat over the next couple of months, 3rd Tuesday in May. This year, it just happens to be the latest it could possibly be, May 21st is the statewide vote day for, for school budgets. So I love showing this like quick formula every year. It looks complicated, but it's really kind of simple if you break it down step by step. So this is the New York State tax cap formula. It went into effect in 2011. So it's been, you know, over a decade now, so we're kind of used to it. What this does is dictate how much money we, as a taxing jurisdiction, can raise from the community, requiring only 50% approval or needing super majority approval, 60%. And we'll go through, you know, our full calculation tonight. But you start with the prior year. For whatever reason, if you make a mistake in your levy, that's that prior year offset. You can adjust it there. You multiply it first by the tax-based growth factor. This is a number that comes from the New York State Department of Tax and Finance. It accounts for all new permanent growth within your community. And we'll review what that number is for Penfield. You add in any pilots receivable in the prior fiscal year. So that's this current year for us as we look at next year's school budget. Pilot, as a reminder, is a payment in lieu of taxes. It's negotiated by the County Industrial Development Agency to spur new development and give new businesses tax breaks. You can subtract any tort exclusion amount. This has never been an issue for us, but if a school district were subject to a lawsuit where they didn't have insurance coverage, that was more than 5% of their operating budget, there's a mechanism where you could raise the money in taxes if you had to. You then multiply your figure by the allowable levy growth factor from 1.0 to 1.02%. So this is that CPI figure, the inflationary adjustment that's capped at 2%. This is why a lot of folks have, for many years, called this the 2% tax cap formula. We know in the last couple of years that inflation has been above 2%. It's above 2% again for this current calculation, and I'll show that. We subtract any pilots that we're going to receive for next year. We add in any available carryover. We do have available carryover this year because last year, we had a 0% levy. We stayed completely flat. So some of the money, not all of it, that we foregoed last year, we have an opportunity to get some of that in our formula should we need it this year. And then that brings us to coming year exclusions. Typically, we don't have coming year exclusions. Most of the school districts around us have a capital levy. That means they have to spend more in debt service than they take in in building aid. We're the opposite. We receive more in building aid usually than we pay in debt service. So we don't have a capital exclusion. I did mention at our, I think it was our December meeting, that ERS, based on the amount the pension system is increasing this year, there's going to be a very small exclusion for that, but the state hasn't made available what that's going to look like for us. But it's going to be a pretty nominal number in the overall calculation. So that brings us to our tax levy limit adjusted for transfers plus exclusions. So the first part, the first major part of that formula, as I mentioned, comes from New York State. It's the tax-based growth factors. And what this does is account for new development in the community. Typically, we're kind of in the middle of Monroe 1 and Monroe 2 districts. Our average has been about 70. This year, we're close to 1%. That's what that means, the 97th hundredths of 1%. You can see Churchville was a little over 2% growth in their entire assessed value, and Rush Henrietta was about 1.9%. Those are kind of the big areas of growth. And then down, all the way down to Brighton, that had zero tax-based growth factors this year. We typically see those East Rondas, West Rondas, Brighton's because they're so landlocked. They don't have a lot of development space left that they're kind of on that end of the spectrum. What this means, just in pure theory, is that we would raise our taxes 0.97% just to account for new growth. And it would be all else equal for everybody else. The other major factor of the tax cap calculation is that allowable levy growth factor. So that's that CPI figure, Consumer Price Index, measured by inflation. Over the course of last year, 2023, it averaged 4.1%. So if you look at this chart, what that January 6.4% number means, the difference between January 2023 and January 2022 was 6.4% annual inflation. So throughout the course of the year, it did come down over the last six months. We're kind of in more of that 3% range, but the long story short is that we're still well over the 2%. So it is 4.1%, but it's actually 2% for the formula. And I'll get back to this 4.1% when we talk about state aid because it's relevant. So here's what our calculation looks like for next year. Again, this is unofficial. It's preliminary. We have to submit our final calculation to the state by March 1st. So we start with our prior year levy. Again, it was a 0% levy for last year. We multiply it by that tax-based growth factor. We add in the prior year pilots, take out exclusions. We do see that 2% number on the allowable levy growth factor in the middle. Again, it's actually 4.1%. You subtract pilots for the coming year. The difference in our pilots is small. So $135,000 this year and $142,000 expected for next year. So not a lot of difference there year to over year. That available carryover number, so it's a little over $1 million for us for this current year. And that brings us all the way down to $71,415,194. Again, I do think with that arrow, there will be a small ERS exclusion, but I don't think it's going to be a lot. I think it's only a couple thousand dollars. So it could bring us up to, you know, 4.55%, but it's not going to make a big difference. So what this means is that in new revenue from the community, we can raise $3.1 million without going over the need to have 50% community approval at the May vote. If we were to say, okay, we need $71,415,195, we need 60% approval from the community. I don't know where we're going to be at yet. I don't think this is going to be a year, unfortunately, where we're going to be able to have another 0% levy. State aid just doesn't look that good. But I don't know yet if we're going to have to levy up to the full max. We'll talk about that more at our next meeting when we talk about expenditures and sort of balancing where we are. So the New York State Executive Budget, the State of the State was two weeks ago today, and the budget was released last week. The state operating funds budget is up to $136 billion. That's 4.5% increase. UPK through 12th grade education funding is now at $35.3 billion. It's a 2.4% increase. The reason I mentioned the 2.4% is that foundation aid was not fully funded in Governor Hochul's budget. And I'm sure you've started to see this. It's, you know, picked up enough steam in NISBA and NISCUS and ASBO that it's getting attention, which caught a lot of us by surprise because, you know, we're biased in education, but many point to, you know, Governor Hochul's term and consider that kind of her crowning achievement thus far, you know, of her stint as governor. So what the foundation aid formula did was artificially lower the CPI figure. So remember, we saw that it was at 4.1%. She dropped it down to 2.4% just to make her numbers work, which doesn't seem in good faith of letting the foundation aid formula run, to artificially change it. It's even been called like a gap elimination adjustment 2.0. I think the good news for this is that it's already gotten some bipartisan pushback. So I think, you know, in terms of the legislative discussion over the next two months before there's a budget adopted in April, I think this could change, but it's something we want to hold on to. As we'll see in a moment, it's less of a concern for us, but I'll note that this does remove the hold harmless provision. So the hold harmless provision allows for districts that were overfunded relative to the foundation aid formula to stay flat year to year. They were never penalized or actually given less. But this year, they are. And there are hundreds of districts that are hold harmless across the state. So if you look at districts that are proposed to get more money next year versus less money, it's about half and half across the state. About 50% of districts are scheduled to lose money according to this proposal. So it's a big change. So we'll see what happens. I'm sure it'll be a top of conversations with your, with your groups over the next couple of months. Good news is that the expense-based aids, so those are those BOSI's dollars, transportation dollars, things that we spend this year and we get a percentage back next year, were fully funded in the proposal. Unfortunately, there was no proposal for school meals. There was no proposal for increasing the UPK funding per pupil, and there was no proposal for increasing that BOSI's aid for those career and technical education teachers, which is still, it's been 30 years, it's at $30,000, their limit. So what it means for us is, it's fairly good news. You can see the top line number of the foundation aid is up eight and almost a half percent. That is one of the higher numbers in the county. It's driven by two factors. One, our wealth relatively decreased a little bit across the state. And I think this is because two years ago, Penfield did a reassessment, and I think they were kind of first to do that. And I think everybody else did a reassessment last year across the state. So property wealth went way up. So we relatively look a little less wealthier. And keep in mind, this factors in, you know, Downstate, Long Island, Westchester, all of that factors in. The other big factor was our weighted enrollment. So weighted enrollment looks at our population of students with disabilities and English language learners, of which we've seen really big jumps the last couple of years. Our ELL population has doubled in two years. So the state gives us more money for those classifications because they're more resource intensive typically. Our BOSI's aid on this run is scheduled to go down a little bit. I actually think that'll be higher by the time the April figures are finalized because we just haven't done all of our BOSI spending yet. So we'll get a little bit more in aid than that. Our excess cost aids are for those kiddos that have disabilities. We get a portion of aid back on them. And you can see kind of like a jump in enrollment, a jump in services leads to a bit of a jump in aid. Instructional materials aids are those textbooks, software, library materials that we get on a per pupil basis. If you think back to our December meeting, our enrollment was basically flat year over year. So that's why this number is flat. That's not a weighted enrollment. It's just a pure student count. Transportation aid is scheduled to be up a little, you know, over 6%, but I don't actually think it'll be that high. This is one they always overestimate because we still have an ongoing driver shortage. We're not spending all the money that we budgeted on drivers. So I think that'll be a bit less. Typically, what we get in BOSI's aid makes up for the reduction in transportation aid. And then obviously, building aid draws the eye, being down about $5 million for next year. What this is, is the 2008 capital project dropping off. So there's 15 years of aid from that big project. But as we'll see at our next meeting, we're also seeing a drop off in our debt service as well. So we're still seeing $2.9 million in building aid coming in. Our debt service is, I think, less than, it's like $1.5 million. So still to the good by $1.4 million. And then that UPK separate grant is the same amount as last year, but again, as I mentioned, it didn't change the per pupil funding. It's just the amount of seats. And what we've had trouble with is filling those seats based on the funding arrangement that we get from the state. So between those two funding sources, being up potentially only $3.1 million and down $2.2 million on state aid, we only have about $1 million in new revenue coming in for next year. As I mentioned, we do have that big drop off in debt service. So our expenses are going to be manageable, as we'll see in a couple of weeks, but it's not going to be kind of like the slam dunk budgets that we've had for the last two years. It's going to take a little bit more of a fine tooth to make sure that every appropriation makes sense for us. But we're still in pretty good shape. Like that, that top line foundation aid number is really good. And, you know, for hundreds of districts across the state seeing a decrease in that, that line, you know, we're in, we're in pretty good shape. So, you know, plenty more to come, but that's where we stand here in January. And I'll open it up to any discussion.
Board members, questions, comments? Mark?
Thank you, Dan. I have a couple just questions on some of the specifics, if you have the information. So what, do you know what pilot projects we are, that are veteran, our district that we're getting funding for or money for?
Yep. Yeah, we have three currently, and there's supposed to be one more coming on for next year. Can't remember the names, the developments. Most of them are down in the Panorama Plaza, back behind like the Popeyes down there. I know there's a new one. It's the old gym down in Panorama Plaza that's being converted into an office space. That's supposed to come online for next year. I can get you the exact information. We have three, and we're scheduled to have a fourth for next year.
And we're still not in the loop on when, we're not at the table when it comes to these pilot decisions.
Yeah, we're given a notice that a hearing is taking place, but we don't have any say in the matter. Correct. Yep.
You talked about the state, you know, state funding changes. Has any, is anything changing the ratios for capital projects, state funding of capital projects?
Nope. There's no proposed changes to the way building aid is funded. And all of those other expense-based aids are also fully funded with no changes.
And then you mentioned the ELLs. We've doubled. Do you know offhand what the percentage of students that would fall under the ELL category are right now?
They're on the New York State report card, Mark.
Oh, I should just look that up. Yes. On one of the slides, though, I noticed we did have it in there. I don't know if you know off the top of your head.
But that would have been last year's data.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we've gone from, I know, so I think we were like 40 ELL students maybe three or four years ago, and I know it's like 120 now, something like that. Yeah, so it's, you know.
And that's, okay. And then the, the last one, we talked about instructional materials and tied to enrollment. Now, does this also include instructional materials for private schools? And don't we have a little bit, we have to do like textbooks for private schools as well?
Yeah, it's included on a per pupil basis there. And we also have to share some of our grant funds as well, the federal dollars with the private schools.
And so, so it's not just our enrollment. Essentially, it could be a net neutral whether they're in our district or not. Now, and again, can you clarify, if we have a private school in our district and they're, and then they have students that are not from our district, is there some, is that prorated in some way?
The only services we have to provide for non-resident students that attend non-public schools in our location is, I think, usually just health services. I don't think we have to give them the textbook money unless they're Penfield students.
So the private school would then say, hey, this is how many are in your district?
Correct.
From this district. They essentially divide up.
Yeah. The only one we fully have to do is the health services, and then we bill back the students' home district.
Okay. Good. Thank you. That was it.
Keep in mind that numbers make me dizzy.
It's been a long meeting. I get it.
It's not just a long meeting. It's just me and numbers.
It's dual, yeah.
So I think what, I think what I heard you saying is that there's potentially a $3 million tax levy increase.
If we, if we wanted to go up to our tax cap and still only require 50% community approval, we can go up to that $3.1 million. approval, we can go up to that $3.1 million increase, yeah, four and a half percent.
Okay. So when do you do that versus look at reducing expenditures somewhere? When do you raise, when do you reduce expenditures versus raising income?
Yeah, that's the appropriations analysis that takes place over the next six to eight weeks.
So who does that you?
We, no, we as a group. We're always looking at new proposals, we're getting all the budget requests back, we're doing staffing analysis for next year. I know the high school's doing their course selection, as we learned at our previous meeting soon. So once we have a really good idea what expenses are going to be, then we have to match the revenue to it. And if we're not willing to match the revenue to those projected expenses, then we need to cut. And then we start trying to identify where we could do that in a manner that's, you know, least impactful to students. But the board doesn't adopt a budget until April 16th, so we have, we have almost three months.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Okay, we are on 5A organizational items. Resolved that the Board of Education approves school law practice at Bond Shonig and King as special counsel for the remainder of the 2023-2024 school year. Can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? I remembered on Thursday I was going to practice it, and I didn't practice it. Okay, public comment. We have one speaker. I'd like to just say that we, as a board, appreciate the comments of the community during the public session of the board meeting. Every individual that speaks has a vested interest in the education of our students. Your comments are important to us. Concerns raised will be referred to the district administration for follow-up or actions when appropriate. Community members may sign up to speak. For any person that does sign up to speak, a brief description of the topic addressed before presenting is asked, and there is a limit to three minutes or less per speaker. We also ask that speakers model the conduct we expect from our students in school daily. Individuals who choose to participate in the public comment period should note that they agree to and are bound by the terms outlined in Policy 1515, which includes conducting themselves in a civil manner consistent with the district code of conduct, refraining from comments related to specific personnel or students, including names or other identifiable information such as job titles, grade levels, schools, et cetera, and refraining from slanderous comments or statements, obscene language, threats of violent statements, advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice. So please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. Thank you. We have one speaker, Mr. Kevin Lockhart.
Hello. Are you listening to all today? Hi, I'm a Monroe County resident. I'm just coming to give a very short, three-minute opinion on the state of the Penfield School District because I want to tell you all how valuable Penfield is to the Monroe County landscape. And I believe that this district is fully off track because of what we all just sat through earlier, the political ideologies and the activism, and then the school's idea of education, they just go contrary to one another. So this whole idea of replacement language and the whole priming awareness and shifting perception and marginalized identities and the activism and the all-inclusiveness, I believe, you know, like people say, there's no description, there's no definition for what equity really is. There's no description for it, but it goes on and on, it goes on to the next step and the next step. So I'd definitely be, I'm very, very concerned about the state of this district, just in terms of, everyone agrees, this Penfield is very good. The activists refer to the three Ps, Penfield, Parenton, and Pittsford. Penfield, of course, being like the top three. So underscoring all of this is this ideology of the marginalized individuals being oppressed. This is all, by the way, involuntary because the money that we're talking about here that's coming in from the state rides on this whole intrusion of SCL and then the other side of it, which is the equity ideology. And it's very intrusive, it's unwelcome. The books that are coming in, like I got a receipt here from a guy back in the day who bought a filthy adult book for the kids in the library, and I had to call in and be like, why is this book here? And they're like, I don't know, this guy, this teacher, this librarian ordered it years and years ago. So this unhealthy obsession by the school district with, and these SCL activists, these CSE and the Planned Parenthood activists, and the Equity Access Directors and the 65, there's so many of them. The intrusion on their, on the kids', students' lives, just being minors under the age of 18, is, and to be surveying them and to be even surveying the non-verbal kids is ridiculous, it's gross. I wish it would end. You've gone way off track as a district. I hope, I hope this all fails and it does not succeed. We should go back to just whatever it was prior to 2020, we should continue to do that if possible. So the social engineering, not good, not a good thing. It's not going to, the kids aren't going to be any happier for it, the school's not going to get any more points from anybody except for the state. So this whole state agenda, just, you know, a lot of people feel this way, I think. I don't think they want to sit through two and a half hours to say this, but I know that there are people out there who do feel this way, and so I thought I'd come and just make you all aware that there is a perception shifted to the other side of this, to this whole state argument of the ideology and the activism and the political nature that's intrusive and surveying. So thanks for having me, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak always. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are on financial items. Whereas the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District seeks to sell real property, which is located at 3021 Atlantic Avenue in the town of Penfield, County of Monroe, and State of New York, being taxed, tax map number 109.04-1-28, consisting of approximately 38.79 plus or minus acres of vacant land. Whereas the Board of Education received proposals from potential purchasers of the property that compiled with the published request for proposals previously authorized by Resolution of the Board of Education, now therefore be it resolved as follows. The sale of the property is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is found not to have an adverse environmental impact. The Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District hereby selects the proposal by Dan and Carolyn Scorsa for the purchase of 3021 Atlantic Avenue property at the purchase price of $400,000 and approves the terms and conditions of the purchase contract. The officers and employees of the district are authorized and directed to take all steps necessary or appropriate to execute the real estate purchase and sale agreement, excuse me, and take steps necessary to move forward with the transfer of the property in compliance with the contract terms and the provisions of New York State law, 1804-6C. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education hereby approves the assignment of CCC's Universal Pre-K Agreement to Inspire CRAN Campus? The Board authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to submit written notice to CCC authorizing said assignment and take all necessary actions to implement said assignment. This resolution shall take place or take effect immediately. Can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Policies for first read? We have workplace violence prevention policy statement and student voter registration and preregistration. Do you want to talk?
Yeah, that'd be great. I've gotten a couple of minutes without talking, so I need to get in here. Workplace violence prevention, that is currently a law that focuses on all state workers and state buildings. They've expanded it to schools as well. And so this is a requirement, this policy, you'll see it as first read, it, this is a short policy, it may change as we go through, but we do need to put that in place for the state. It's required policy, required work we need to do. And it really is around a process to make sure that, you know, we are free from workplace violence and that we have a process in place if anything ever does happen. So we're still working through that. There's also required training for all staff, and that's not just Penfield, it's across the state, but just, this is our first policy. So please, if people have feedback or suggestions, can email those directly to myself or to the Board Clerk Kathleen Zastro. And then the student voter registration, this is a policy we've already had, so the 6190, that's a new policy. The policy on student voter registration is just a change, that's also required policy, basically that we work to encourage and provide the opportunity for students to register to vote in all elections. And so that policy has some minor changes that you can see. Zip.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the terms of Board of Education members, Mrs. Catherine Dean, excuse me, Mr. Mark Elidge, and Mrs. Kristin Harley, will expire June 30th, 2024. The term of office for a board member is three years. Board candidate nominating petitions may be obtained at the district office after March 1st, 2024. Forty-nine signatures of qualified voters are needed on the petition, which must be filled with the clerk no later than 5:00 PM on, 5:00 PM on April 22nd, 2024. Candidates should supply their personal biographical data and statement of qualifications and issues to the district clerk by April 15th, 2024 to meet the printing deadline for the budget newsletter. The annual Monroe County School Boards Association Perspective Board Member of School Board Candidate Seminar has been scheduled for Saturday, April 13th, 2024, and the district's meet-the-candidate night is to be determined. Okay, Monroe County School Boards Committee Meetings, we have information exchange.
I went to information exchange. It was an evening presentation at the Science Museum about a topic I know a little about, being the solar eclipse. So it was a great presentation, just around the power of that solar eclipse. I actually have a meeting tomorrow with town supervisors and Monroe County sheriffs and school officials around, again, just planning for the potential of up to 500,000 people coming into the area and then leaving right after the eclipse happens. And so again, we don't have school that day, but it was a great presentation. And the gentleman at the Science Museum who oversees all of this is also a Penfield resident with a little kiddo who will be joining us in a couple of years. So nice community feel of the solar eclipse. Yep. So for me, it was just like, I've heard all this before, I wanted to get up there and present. No, it was, he did a great job, but it was, again, just more detail on that. The one thing I'll mention is our district has purchased glasses for our students, and they did just say this, so I'll say it publicly, is that if you do want those glasses, work through the Science Museum, look online, just be careful because there've already been some recall that are purchased through, like, Amazon, is that they're not actually solar glasses, but I think people jump on the fact that everybody is looking for them now. So just be cautious if you're looking to purchase glasses. There's also lots of great ways, if you go to the Science Museum, to also see you don't need glasses. You can use the pinpoint, you can use, I learned, a colander that you have, like for your pasta at your house. If you put that on the ground, the shadow goes through, you can see the eclipse, so pretty cool and exciting. Mm-hmm. And I also learned that if you look at the eclipse, and we know that it can really damage your eyes, what I didn't know was you can't feel it. So you may look at the eclipse and say, why is everybody talking about it? My eyes aren't burning, but it doesn't take that long for long-term damage to happen. And so again, with children, and also they mentioned pets. I don't know, if you've got a dog that stares at the sun, you might have other issues going on, so, but just to be aware of the dog. So, great presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, labor relations. Mark?
Thank you. We had a presentation on facilitated intensive negotiations, and it was presented by James Gregory, who is with Ferrara and Fiorenza, I think I should be able to pronounce that now, but I don't. And really what it is, is a change in the traditional method of collective bargaining, where there's more alignment and agreement upfront, especially agreement of facts, agreement of data. So then the debates, the negotiation can be more on the outcomes versus negotiating a lot of, you know, kind of back and forth. And it's also expedited where it's, the way it's structured now, and, you know, Tom and Dan can talk about it better, but it's much, it's a lot of back and forth, and then if you get into impasse, it's, you know, you have a lot of, I don't know how to say, starts and stops, you know? It's not all one session, where this is much more of a lot of prep and then some very intense sessions where you don't, you know, it's kind of like a workshop. You know, if you're in the corporate world, you have workshops and all these, you know, kaizans and things like that, you know? It's more like that where you really meet and get work through in a very structured manner. You know, during this, and I think a number of folks were here, Steve, Dan, were there, was it someone else? Just the two of you?
It was just the two of us.
The two of you, yeah. And so...
I was reading about the solar eclipse.
Yeah, 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 you were at the solar eclipse thing. And so Dr. Driffl, he has experience with this in a previous district, and he spoke positively of this, so it sounds like something that, you know, does have positive outcomes, and it does seem to be a trend, so it might be something we do in our upcoming collective bargaining, you know, when we have those opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and I just do want to point out, as a reminder, the Legislative Breakfast is on the...
February 2nd.
Third, and the deadline for registration is Friday, so please register. It's, you know, Monroe County School Board Association's got it so nice, it's like 10 seconds to register now.
And it's in time, too.
And it's in time, too.
Yep.
So it's a nice, as opposed to somewhere else.
We kind of have an obligation to have a good showing here.
Say that again. All right, unfinished business. So on February 7th, we have our board workshop. Any other unfinished business? No? Any new business? No? All right. Can I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 9:02 PM?
Sure.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?